Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And there is no audience attendance. Would bring us to disposition of minutes. Did everyone have a copy of the minutes from December?
Yes.
Were there any additions, corrections? Or do we have a motion to accept them as they were printed?
Motion to accept.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion back. And Helen?
Hey there. I guess we did lose Sharon after all, sorry. Okay. The monthly report, I hope you had a chance to look over it as well as the financials that I forwarded to you this morning. Right now, we're in good shape budget-wise. I haven't heard anything about next year's budget yet. I never realized why they have us complete it in the beginning of December and then don't start working on it until the middle of January. But makes stuff interesting, that's for sure. Any questions about anything in the report?
I have a question about the Connecticut.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Sharon, is that... Hello? Is that Sharon?
No, this is Carol. I cannot get in with the video part at all. I'm on the phone and on the computer.
Okay, alright. Did you get the new link that I sent out?
I got the one that came in just recently, the last one.
Yeah, yeah, it was just like 20 minutes ago.
Yeah, that's the one I used, but I bet audio won't connect.
Oh, alright.
I can see you though, I can see you on the screen.
Okay.
So I got the phone to my ear and...
Okay, well, you're present in the way that matters, that's good.
I didn't get one from you. Oh, wait a minute, yeah, I did. But it didn't come through till 6:30, 6:25.
Yeah, that might be when I realized that nobody was getting in, I said, "Well, maybe I better resend the link." So that's what happened.
Okay.
Hmm.
Hmm hmm. Okay, sorry, what was your question?
It was just a, yeah, a state of Connecticut, $27,000 from the state of Connecticut, is that leftover elevator grant?
No, there was nothing left over from the elevator grant.
What is that from?
The state of Connecticut reimburses us for sending our books to other libraries.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yep.
And the intent of that is for...
Well, because the material isn't available to our taxpayers, they give us a little kickback.
Oh, okay, alright. Because I thought I didn't get the stuff from the elevator, I mean, oh, no, okay, alright.
Nothing wrong.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else from anybody?
Hey, Adam, and I don't...
Oh, shoot, I forgot to do that. I move that we add under new business a discussion of temporary new meeting time and/or day. You get that, Marlo? Okay. Sign language is fine. Okay, when we get to new business, I'll explain why. I talked to the health director today. We got a heads up from the Rocky Hill librarian director. And she was told by her town manager, this is going to get a little bit confusing, that the Newington town manager is calling for a meeting of the town managers of Berlin, New Britain, Rock Hill, Weathersfield, and Cromwell to see how services might be consolidated. So we're not really sure what that meant. As far as I know, the meeting hasn't happened yet. But the Rocky Hill library director was already going to be meeting with her town manager to let her know everything that libraries already do to consolidate services among us. So I'm hoping that that kind of puts an end to that. They were inviting the health district director also, so maybe it involves something along those lines. But it just put a little red flag up for me because we do, we already do a lot of cooperating and collaborating among the libraries with programming and resources and sharing ideas. I just don't know what he's getting at, but I just wanted to put it out there that there's been an inquiry.
Is this just during COVID or is this like forever?
I think this is forever.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll see. The Rocky Hill library director is excellent at presenting her case about anything to anyone. So I feel very confident that she will get the message across to her town manager and hopefully he'll bring what she says to the meeting. If it was going to be for consolidating library services, I would think we would ask the library directors, not the town managers. So we'll see what happens, but that just happened the other day, so I wanted to let you know. I did contact the health district today to offer the library as a vaccination station. If they wanted to use our meeting room as a place to administer vaccines, since we're not using it for programming anyway, I thought that might be a beneficial use of our room. He thanked me but didn't say anything else. But at least I look like I'm being helpful, right?
Right.
What else did I want to tell you besides on my report? The community scavenger hunt is getting a lot of good publicity. You read that it was on Channel 30 already, but we just got a phone call from the Hartford Current and they want to do a good feature story on it. Oh, yay. Like, there's already had a lot of news out there, but if you want to do a story on us, I'm all for it. We are cooperating with the UPD kids. They are looking for volunteer work and the children's department very much could use some volunteers to help them stuff the grab-and-goes that they are doing instead of storytime. We're finding our virtual storytimes are not being well-attended and I think it's because the children are already screened out. So doing things on the computer screen is not as popular as them coming to the library to pick up a bag with crafts and books and activities, whatever, and doing those instead. We do have a lot of people that ask us for book bundles, so they'll give us the age and interests of the child and we'll pull a bundle of books for them and put it outside for curbside. So that's being very popular as well. So I know it's hard to notice by the look of the stats because when you see, you know, we're 58% down in something. I do want to say that our stats from month to month are not as dismal as that. So last month, for example, I know that's... Something that was our program attendance, no. Well, our downloadables always go up, so I'm not too worried about that. Where's my people using computers? Web page sessions, okay. So our webpage sessions were up 6% last month, but it went from 8,139 last month to 9,988. So it's little by little, it's creeping back up. It just looks terrible because we're comparing it to last year pre-COVID. So don't be afraid, looking at that percentage column, we are actually a lot better. Just wanted to let you know that. Okay, I think that might be it for all the goodies.
Helen? I just wanted to make a comment about your library news that you sent out email. I don't know if it was a couple days ago or just for today or whatever, but it was very interesting. The books that were most taken out last year and the choice of the... Yeah, I found it very interesting, very informative.
Yes, oh, good, thank you. We find these little, you know, hidden factoids and like to bring them to your attention. Yeah, good, I'm glad you, I'm glad you found it interesting.
Yeah, I did, you know, I wanted to send them here, I only got two of them.
Uh oh, you better get on the stick there, Carol.
I gotta get going, yeah.
Anybody else? Alright, I'm tossing it back to Donna.
Okay. Are you still doing a lot of the curbside with this cold weather?
Yep.
Are you finding more people coming into the library?
Nope.
No.
No, they are not. Even though the number of books that were checked out was more this month than last month, not this month, December than November. I haven't noticed a big difference, but however, I was out a lot during the month of December. So I didn't get a good, I didn't get a good look. Oh, I know what I didn't tell you too. I spent a couple hours today in the paperback section. We're reading it extensively because we are, and I think this was mentioned in somebody's report, we're moving the YA department, the teen department, to that little corner. And we'll be moving the paperbacks and some of the fiction and nonfiction around to make it easier for the non-teens to find their stuff. Carrie and Jennifer are working on that together, but we figure, why move it if we're going to get rid of it anyway? So that's what we're working on. We also got two brand-new databases. We've been working with this company called Brainfuse and we have their Job Now database, which helps people with resumes and interviewing. It's a very good resource and they've just come out with a homework help site and a veterans' site. So the homework site is called Help Now and they're... Did I not bring that paper home with me? No, I didn't. It provides live help for kids in grades, I want to say, to 12. And it provides live help from 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM. And then Vets Now, or maybe it's Vet Now, Vet Now. They're specifically targeted toward veterans who are looking for information on benefits and job help and resume help. And this, the Vet Now site is moderated solely by veterans who know all the ins and outs of what they can apply for and how to get it. So we thought that would be a very worthwhile serve to provide. And the homework help site, the school is paying for half. So I thought that would be a good deal as well. So we'll be doing a lot more publicity. It begins February 1st. It'll be in the e-newsletter that gets sent out to every, well, a lot of people. And then we'll do extra publicity as well. So I knew there was more I had to tell you. Okay, now it's Donna's turn.
I don't have anything else to add. I'll be working on the yearly report that we do. And we're on subcommittee reports, governance.
Nothing to report on for governance.
Okay, but you will next month because I am working on an emergency manual. I started it a couple years ago and my New Year's Eve, my New Year's resolution is to clean off my desk. And as I was going through my desk, I came across this emergency manual that I had started a bit back and I said, "I have to finish it, I have to finish it." So I am working on it. I have to get it over to our head of facilities and emergency services in town for them to look it over, make sure I haven't misspoke in any part. And then I will get it to you all to look at, especially governance first and then we can present it to the entire board and then I can hand it out to the staff. So governance, you'll have some work coming up pretty soon.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
How about finance and foundation?
I'm going to...
Nothing to report.
I'd be needing my finance people when we go for the budget. See if we have any hearings to speak at.
Okay.
Okay.
And outreach?
Nothing from outreach right now.
All right. How about Friends? Did they meet in January, Helen?
Yes, they did.
And was their New Year's resolution, met fundraisers and all kinds of projects?
Nope. Nope. They, they, nope. They have nothing, they have nothing that they're working on except the book sale. And since the community center isn't open, the only thing they can do is kind of like curbside pickup. You know, somebody will call them and say, "Hey, do you have any James Pattersons?" And they'll meet in the parking lot and hand over the money and... Yeah, they made $55 last month.
Wow.
They're down to 35 members. Come in.
I guess that should be a resolution for us to all think about what we can do in regard to Friends, motivating them or doing something else.
I'll talk about that in a little bit too, in a different section.
Okay. Communications, I don't have any, Helen?
Uh, no, I did not get anything.
Old business? I don't show anything for old business. Just a reminder to everyone whose term is up, hopefully you sent back your paperwork that you wanted to re-up for the following couple of years. And I guess we're on to new...
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did too, and Lily and also.
She did? Okay, good.
I don't know if she did, I assume she did.
Oh.
I assume she did, yeah.
I assume so also. Okay.
All right, new business, possible board?
Yeah. This is different from what I brought up at the very beginning of the meeting, so we'll put that toward the end, the other discussion. But as you know, Kay Marie resigned before her term was up, so we were looking for someone to fill her term, which expires next January. And we approached Gail Marino, who is one of our homebound volunteers. She brings books to the homebound and she was very excited about the possibility of being on the board. And she put in her application. And I believe at the town council meeting next week, they are going to start doing appointments and we'll see if she is accepted. She also, we also have another application from a member of the Friends Board, Jane Skinner. I do not know if she's filled out an application yet, but...
She did, she did.
She did?
Helen, she did, yeah, she said she was getting it in right away, yeah.
Okay. I did not hear that, but we'll see what happens.
Okay, yeah.
Fight to be on the board, wow. Budget update, I mentioned before, I remember I had under new business. There really isn't an update, only to tell you that they haven't started working on it yet, so. Suggestions for increasing cardholders. When I was kind of interviewing Gail Marino, she asked me how many cardholders we had in the library. And when I told her the number, which is under 7,000 in a town of 19,000, she was very surprised. And I think that we need to think of some ways to get people to get library cards. So if anybody has any suggestions, I would love to entertain them. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to run to the restroom and you can talk about some suggestions about... But I'm going to leave the volume up so I can hear you. Oh, no, that...
I'm sure it would be easier if it wasn't COVID time, getting people to come in, to sign up and...
How about, how about offering some sort of a prize or something for opening a library card and having a drawing afterwards for some kind of a prize? I don't know.
That's not a bad idea, maybe we could give some of the Friends books.
You're right.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. That's not a bad idea, though.
And how would we, how would we get that word out? Advertise this kind of a thing?
We seem to be getting some good press from Citizen. Maybe they put something in there and, you know, they're on Facebook and then they send out that monthly newsletter. And maybe, you know, when you pick books up, they have papers in there telling you different things that are going on.
No, I actually think that's a valuable suggestion. People like to win stuff. You know, it's not like it's expensive, you don't have to pay for it, but get a library, be part of a draw for some fabulous prize.
That's right.
Well, we kind of do that. And it's not a fabulous prize, but we always give a little incentive in the month of September because it's National Get a Library Card Month. It doesn't seem to make a big difference in our numbers every month. So we need to come up with something a little more... We've tried standing out in front of Stop and Shop. That didn't work well.
It's just so hard because, you know, you might want to do it if it involved people talking to people, people contacting, that's just not doable.
I know. I know, she, Gail said that she's surprised at how many of her acquaintances don't know everything that you can do at the library. You know, they know that they can get a book or a magazine or maybe even a DVD, but they don't know anything about notary services and passports and the downloadables and borrowing downloadables, the devices. You know, there's just so much that we do that people don't know. And it was on my list of goals right before COVID hit to reach out to the civic groups in town to invite myself to a meeting and talk to them face-to-face. But of course, that didn't happen. So I don't know, I'm kind of running out of ideas, but we talk to other libraries and sometimes we get some good ideas from them. So I'm going to keep doing that. And if you guys can come up with anything, you know my email or you know my phone number, happy to talk and brainstorm with anybody. But I think it's something we have to really consider. If they're talking about consolidating services, you know, I don't want them to think, "Okay, well, we've gotten along without the library really being open for almost a year, so maybe we don't have to open it." I don't want that to happen.
That doesn't mean people are happy about not having a library opening or just... No, that's an altogether different thing.
Yeah. True.
Could the town send out a document with all the services that they offer, including a write-up on the library, the community center and all the other stuff?
To mail out, you mean, Bob?
Yeah, to all the citizens, I mean, not everything goes on the web and... I mean, at least we'll get it out there, but...
Okay, a town-wide mailing, mailed by the town, and we don't have to pay, right?
Yeah, even though the water bill, taxes or whatever.
What, so what do you get through the mail? You all live in Berlin, so, and I don't, so what...
Your car taxes, your water bill.
Those taxes.
Well, some people haven't figured it out, so you don't get that.
You can, you can opt out of a paper mail, right?
Yes.
So a lot of people might do that.
But the water became available to opt out of a bill.
Oh. Marlo, you can speak up.
I just wanted to say, I got the VNA.
US, that's the VNA or the VNA?
For the VNA to put through from the water bill and the taxes.
Yeah.
They said no.
Oh, who's "they"?
I think it was Kate, I think.
Really? Hmm, alright.
I mean, it's like a shop.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm her personal librarian, so I think maybe she'll, she won't bend the rules for me. Okay.
Libraries have the same problem, trying to get people to sign up.
Yep.
Part of that's got to be Kindle, you know, look, Kindle. You know, there's certainly a percentage, I know people that are avid readers that have Kindles. They buy, she buys tons of them and I'll say...
Why does she buy them? She can get them from us.
Well, on her Kindle reader.
Yeah. You can borrow that from us.
Right, but not the brand-new, right pot off the prop. You know, she likes to get all the new books if they come out. So there's a little bit of lag time there. She's used to, you know, just buying them, having them at their convenience, you know?
Boy, just think how much money I can spend.
It's expensive.
I know.
It's expensive.
It's expensive for me to buy them. That's why our collection isn't as strong because it, to get a, like a Danielle Steele, not that, that's my favorite, but that's so popular. It cost me $75 to buy the... not that, that's my favorite, but that's so popular, it cost me $75 to buy the ebook.
Wow.
So it makes a big difference. And the audiobooks are, the downloadable audios are even more expensive. Why? They're upwards of $90.
Jeez.
For a Grisham, or a Grisham, or a Danielle Steele, or a, can't think of the other ones, but if it's popular, it's expensive.
Like a Patterson, or...
Oh, yeah.
Patterson, yeah.
Yeah. So I'll look into a townwide mailing, and I got a grant last year. When the pandemic first hit, I got a grant from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain to put a full-page ad in The Citizen to tell what all of our services were. And I know this, The Citizen goes to every home, right? I don't know if everybody reads it, but we did that last year. I suppose I could, no, I think I talked about library cards in the ad, so I don't know. I'll keep thinking, but you have to think, too.
We have a new caller, number three.
Yeah, that's me, Donna. I'm so sorry. A couple, this is Sharon. Couple things came up, and the time just got away from me. Sorry, but I'm here.
Okay. Hello.
Hello. And for our last item, Sharon.
I'm okay. I'll be a minute. Sorry.
I'm teasing you. We had brought up, Sharon, just to catch you up, I, I made a motion in the beginning of the meeting for us to have a discussion about a possible new meeting times and days temporarily. And now I can explain. Our new board member, Karen Pagliaro, I don't know if you know, she's a nurse, and she has been deployed to a site to vaccinate people, and her shift is every Wednesday from 1 until 7:00. She is dismayed by this. She really, really wants to be on the board, and I think she would be a good voice for us with all of the people that she knows in town, both citizen-wise and politically. So I would hate to lose her. I'm wondering if we should entertain a temporary change of day or time to accommodate her. It's totally...
I'm with me, Helen. I mean, you know, she's an asset to the board, as you said, so if we can, you know, work that around that, that's fine with me. I don't know about anybody else, but...
Okay.
I have no objection. Whatever, whatever works for anybody else, it works for me. So not a problem.
Okay.
I have many, I have many different meetings, many different nights, so it's gonna depend on what you choose. Like, I have to leave here at 7:30 for another meeting, so.
Oh, no.
Is Wednesday the only night she works?
Um, I believe it's, she did not tell me, to tell you the truth. She just said that she was, well, you saw the email, she was being deployed for this on Wednesdays, and that she felt bad that it interfered with being on the board.
I mean, this isn't gonna go on forever. I don't know why we can't change it for a little bit, you know?
Okay. Who haven't I heard from?
Yep, finally, Chris also.
Okay, great. Okay, Marlo, your message went away before I could read it.
I can't do Mondays. Marlo said she couldn't do, what, the first Monday?
Yeah, I can't do the first Monday, second Tuesday, or second Thursday.
Okay.
How about the second Monday?
That I can do.
I can't do...
Donna can't do Mondays, right?
And we come home around, we usually leave between 6:30 and 7:00.
Yeah, and the second Monday's out for me, too.
Okay. So that leaves, okay, what about a Tuesday?
Oh, let me see. What, the first Tuesday is not good for me.
Okay.
The second Tuesday would be all right. Second Tuesday's okay.
No, Marlo can't do the second Tuesday. Donna, can you do Tuesdays?
I can do Tuesdays.
What about the third Tuesday?
Why don't you check with Karen, if there's any other nights she's working?
Okay.
And then...
She's on the Pennsylvania Commission, too, which meets the second Tuesday with me.
Okay. So that's, three of you can do the second Tuesday, so that's out. So now we're down to the third Tuesday.
That's fine.
Third Tuesday? Bob, you're...
That's okay.
Bob? Are you there, Bob?
Just trying to unmute my screen. Yeah, just, just let me know a day, and I'll see if I have an issue.
Okay. All right. So right now, it's looking like the third Tuesday, if Karen could do that. I will be in touch with her and see what her schedule is like. If, if it's not doable, then I will come back to you. But...
Okay.
At least I have something to propose, and as I said, I think she would, she's too good of an asset to lose, so I would rather try to accommodate her.
Yeah, I agree.
That's okay with everybody?
It's fine with me.
Yeah.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you for being flexible. I, I appreciate it, and I think it'll be good in the long haul. And that's all I need to discuss with our...
So, okay, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna change the date, then does Marlo have to change the dates for the town?
Yeah, we have to do a lot of stuff. Yeah.
So you'll let us know one way or the other?
Of course. And if you wanna do, if Tuesday is okay with her, do you wanna keep it at 6:30?
Yes.
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 Okay.
I'd rather 7:00, but...
You might be, not for Sharon.
It's always somebody.
All right, let me talk to Karen and see what options we have. I will propose the third Tuesday at 6:30 and see if we can go from there. Does yes to you? Anybody have anything they want to discuss?
You'll let us know what happens with the consolidation idea comes up?
Oh, you bet I will.
When is that supposed to happen?
I, they didn't set a time, as far as I know.
Okay.
And who was, which library brought it up? Did you say Newington?
Newington Library is closed.
Right, they have it.
Yes.
And it was them that brought it up?
Yep.
Wonder what's going on there? That's very interesting.
I know. They have a lot of construction going on in the town, too. They're, they're redoing their town hall, and that's a big mess.
Of all the libraries that you've mentioned, aren't they probably the largest one?
Um, I think they and Weathersfield are close, and Rocky Hill and we are close, and Cromwell is with Rocky Hill and us.
Right, right. Yeah, that would be interesting.
This is iced tea, by the way.
Sure is.
Yeah, you can tell us that.
I can tell you. If I wanted to hide it, I would have put it in a solid glass instead of a cup. If you see me drinking coffee, you better believe it ain't coffee. Not at night. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your input and your flexibility, and I will definitely keep in touch by email until we meet again next month.
We need to have, does someone have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
So moved. That's Carol. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, Chris, did you do your program for the garden club yet?
Uh, my program is coming up next, um, next Thursday.
Okay.
Right.
Did you, did you meet with Carrie yet about trying to put the video on WebEx?
Um, I responded to her and hope to do it on Friday afternoon-ish.
Oh, awesome.
So am I coming through very crackly tonight still?
You're better now. In the beginning, you were very hard to stand, but now you're...
Yeah, I got some bandwidth issue, I think, on my side. It's been kind of, uh, long tonight, or it doesn't sound clear, so I gotta, I'm hoping I can zoom out when I talk to Carrie.
Okay.
I have the same thing, I have the same thing, Chris. It's very unclear. It's very lost static.
Yeah.
There is a lot of background.
There's background, it's scratchy.
Well, you know what, what that is, too? A lot of times, when everybody is unmuted, that brings in a lot of background noise. If you find, if you mute yourself and just the person that's speaking is unmuted, it seems to be a little bit better. But it's hard to meet in with everybody muted, because I think, you know, I, I miss a lot, I feel. So I like when you're all able to talk at me.
Maybe soon we'll be able to meet in person again.
That would be lovely.
Yes, it would. That would be nice, yeah.
Oh, my goodness!
You can always see me, but, you know, you don't wanna hear me.
I can do both now. All right, everybody, thank you again, and I'll see you, if I don't see you on the library, I'll see you on WebEx.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Good night. Bye-bye.
Have care. Bye-bye.
Bye.